Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 17, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
We have with us tonight Mr. Joseph Still, Mr. Jared Chadwick, Ms. Judith Whiteside, myself, Sarah Corbett, and Mr. Marcus Gomes.
And remote?
Town Administrator Derek Sullivan is on Zoom.
As well as Mr. Bowen, I believe.
As well as Town Council Richard Bowen.
Yeah, he's supposed to be there. Thank you. I'm going to ask Ms. Corbett to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the Residents' Comments. Comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than 10 minutes of Resident comments per meeting. And based on past practice, as well as a possible violation of the open-meeting law, the Select Board will not respond or comment on any of the comments that are made to us on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to address this board under Residents' Comments? If so, please step forward, and I'll ask you to state your name, please, and your address. And then a mic with a green light on it, if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Morrison, and my wife is Rosalyn. She's in the back.
What's your address, sir, please?
Address is 185 Onset Ave., Onset.
Thank you.
I've been a resident in Onset for over 35 years, and I've seen a lot of changes, some good, some, in my estimation, not too good. I wrote a letter, sent any, I made a phone call to see, to have a meeting, and I was told I had to write an email. So we wrote an email to the Commission of Selectmen, and I presume everybody's read it, hopefully.
Yes.
So I won't have to read it to you.
You can if you want to, so that the public could hear it as well.
Okay. We called the office, and we were notified that we had to write an email to the Select Board. It's our concern about loud music coming from the Onset Beach Patio and Grill Restaurant, which is across the street from us at 185, I believe they're 182 Onset Ave. They were given a permit the month of June for Wednesdays and Thursdays, and also for the Fourth of July. The music is very, very loud. It kind of screws up your health. Atmosphere is not too good for the blood pressure. It doesn't fit into the Onset Village that I remember when I moved here in '89. It's usually a quiet village with concern for citizens that looked out for each other. Grave concern, our sleep was affected watching television. You couldn't even listen to television with the loud booming music. We understood how the rules in business changed and so forth, and hours of operations. It's also a place of the business that has two big violations on it the last two years. One of them is what we're doing through right now, and the other one was they canceled the liquor license. So that's a dire question. Please let this, please don't let this business run the village. We already have one doing it. I think we all know what it is. Let us remember that he's a renter who came in, should know the rules and regulations at the time the business could be opened. It's a nice business. It's a well-run business, what I see, but outside dancing, no, no, not till 1:00 in the morning, not in the village. We're not running a dance hall here. I don't want to see this. I'm quite sure that you don't want to see it next to your house. This is a little bit out of context to the area and the village. You shouldn't have this type of thing going on. Plus, I think the building would be overloaded with people. Then you'd have a problem with that with the building permits. So I wish that you would take this into consideration. This is not the way the village should be set up. I know times change, music changes, sound does change, too, but this is ridiculous. It could be heard down to Dummy Bridge, and it could be heard all the way down to Stone Bridge and even further. So that gives you the decibel amount, the sound of the music. It was crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Is there anyone else who chooses to address this body on a non-agenda item?
I'm on that same issue.
You can come forward and address this.
I'm just Rosalyn Morrison.
You have to speak into the mic, otherwise we don't pick you up.
My name is Rosalyn Morrison, and I just want to say that when the officer showed off, after we called him, they turned it down. But as soon as the officer was away, he turned it back up.
I just have one question for you. In your email that you sent, you gave us a date and time of what you're complaining about. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who chooses to speak on any issue that is not on the agenda? Can you see anybody in the audience? Okay. Then we're going to move on to announcements. We have with us this evening Jared Valenzola and Sandra Wright, who both are county commissioners. Jared is the Chair of the County Commissioners, Plymouth County Commissioners. So would you step forward and identify yourselves for the record? I guess for the beginning, you should sit and speak into the green light.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jared Valenzola, Plymouth County Commissioner and Chair, and I'm joined this evening by?
Sandra Wright, County Commissioner.
And it's a pleasure to be back here this evening to present you folks with a check for $50,000 from the Plymouth County Opera Program. I know and understand that this is going towards the campaign to build a new food pantry in town, which is certainly a wonderful cause and a noble cause that your community is undertaking, and we're happy, on behalf of the county, to be able to be a small part of that endeavor. Before I go any further, I do want to just send the regrets of Treasurer Tom O'Brien. He could not make it this evening. He was trying to, and he had a last-minute matter come up. Also Senator Kelly Duner, I spoke with her this afternoon, and she was also going to try and make it, but unfortunately, she got tied up. But as Chair noted, she's been everywhere, and I know she's been in Wareham and Onset often, just as I have. I was actually at Mark Anthony's the other day, so I'll give you a little shout-out. But we've really enjoyed this program, and I know Commissioner Wright has some things to say, and we've been appreciative of the partnership we've had with the town, with Derek Sullivan, and your entire team. One of the things that the Treasurer wanted me to note, and I noted as well, every program that Plymouth County has to offer, Wareham takes advantage of. You are in our other Post-Employment Benefit Trust Fund, Mayfield Municipal Health Group, vehicle bid, et cetera, et cetera. You are the only town in Plymouth County that uses every service that Plymouth County has to offer. To that, I will say, you're doing right by your taxpayers, because as has been demonstrated, we've been able to save communities millions of dollars, both through CARES and through ARPA, but also through the other programs that we've been able to successfully run, and we're really grateful for you folks and for Derek and your team that have done such a wonderful job of partnering with the county and showing what value we're able to bring to the table. So before I say anything further, I would like to turn over to Commissioner Wright, with your permission, just to say a few words, then I'll tie it up. And we do have the big well-traveled check that continues on, and it's now, I think it's four years old now. It's older than my niece, so it's continuing.
Shape, too.
It is. It's definitely weathered a few storms, so happy to keep it going, though.
Well, thank you so much for having us here this evening. First of all, I just want to tell you that I got here at 6:00. I was sitting in the parking lot, and then I realized I had a flat tire. So I went down the street, and I just want to shout out and give thanks to your Dana, Josh, and Dan at the fire station, because they were of great help, I think only because I told them I was bringing a check to the town here. But anyways, they were great. They helped me. I said, I'm going to be at the town hall at 7:00. So big, you know, shout to them, and so many thanks for, you know, for them helping me. I really appreciate it. So, you know, as I tell so many other towns as we wind down, I just wanted to remind most people that the CARES Act and ARPA became a tough reality in most times when we first started these programs. Perhaps the most significant thing that we did was to manage the CARES funds, which we delivered twice as much money to our towns. Jared had mentioned some of the programs that we, or that you people are in, although I was really, earlier today, I was surprised that so many of them, you know, I think just about most of them you're in, as he said, the MMH, MMHG, Peacock Parking, Mobile Integrated Health, Vehicle Bid, Ice Melt Bid, Gas and Diesel, and the Burn Grant. I also like to bring out that, you know, how much money we have given you over a period of time through CARES Act and ARPA. The CARES Act, you received $2,197,239.79. ARPA is $4,085,848.53, which is a total of $6,283,088.32. And we're very happy that we could, you know, be a part of this and give you that money. So thank you so much, and thank you so much for being on with most of our programs, and I know that we have a lot more coming out, which we would love to keep you informed about.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Derek, do you want to say something? Mr. Sullivan, excuse me.
No, I appreciate the partnership. Plymouth County has been excellent, especially through the CARES and ARPA and everything we've been involved with. And usually, I think one of my skills is find people that are smarter than me and work with them. So that's what we've done with Plymouth County.
Thank you.
So we really appreciate all you do, and they keep on bringing more and more programs, and they're not just resting on their laurels, and they're bringing us in to hear what the communities need, and they move forward on getting it done. So thank you both for all you do, and as you know, it's, I think the job that Plymouth County Treasurer Tom O'Brien does is fantastic. So it's anything we can do to keep him on board.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we will, that's up to the voters, but thankfully, I think they intend on keeping him around. We certainly do, I think. But we, you know, and to Commissioner Wright's point as well, you know, we were able to administer this ARPA program now for about 1.2%. And I'm only going to add these final details, because I'm not sure if we're going to be back. I think you may have, I think you might have one more, but I can't remember off the top of my head, so you're maybe.
I think we're done.
You may be done. Well, that's okay. So then, you know, one of the things that we'd like to note, too, I think we had come here late last year or earlier this year with some infrastructure money. And one of the things, we managed about $100 million for the entire county at 1.2%. $25 million of those dollars, and I think Wareham utilized some of those dollars, went to water sewer infrastructure projects. And I think what we're going to begin to start realizing is just the actuarial savings that the taxpayer had from that, because that otherwise is money that would have had to have been bonded or borrowed or taken from a capital fund, wherever it may have come from. But if that money was borrowed, which a lot of communities have to do, that would have been another 20 to 25 million in interest. So on top of the fact that we were able to provide this money to Wareham and to the other member communities, that also saved taxpayers millions of dollars just in bonding costs alone. And considering where interest rates are, we're really proud of the fact that just that number alone, right, it really is a staggering reality, and it's a helpful thing for a lot of communities across the county. And I'll echo Mr. Sullivan's sentiment. We also like to find people that are smarter than us, so thankfully, we're all smarter than one another, and I know what I know and I know what I don't know, but we really cherish this partnership through these programs, and we'll continue to build and foster programs that these communities need, that your community needs, regional projects and services that we feel you need, or you tell us you need, and we get them off the ground without any ability to raise taxes or do anything. We, our budget, I think, is 10% fewer than it was a few years ago. So we're doing this all on a budget that hasn't really grown since 2010, so we continue to get the most bang for your buck. As the Treasurer likes to say, we are the best value in any government level in the Commonwealth and probably in the United States. So we're really proud of that, and can't do it without you, so we really thank all of you and thank your leadership, for your partnership.
Thank you.
Anything he doesn't know, I'll tell him he doesn't know.
Yes, you can always tell me that.
No, we really appreciate, you know, all of you people, our towns, and they've been so great. And, you know, like I said, when we came into the CARES, nobody had ever had the experience or the people to run that, and you really did a great job, and you had a great team, and we really appreciate all the hard work that you put into it, and thank God for Tom, who, you know, helped you and guided you through it. But we really appreciate everything, all of the towns, what they've done. And like I had said earlier, we still have a lot more programs, and we'll definitely, you know, keep you abreast of, you know, what's coming up, and we just hope our towns just, you know, get a little skin in the game and that we can accommodate each and everyone. So thank you.
Thank you.
And the last point, I'll echo Commissioner Wright's thanks to the Fire Department for helping with her flat tire. Even if I was, even if I wasn't dressed this way, I still would be woefully incapable of helping her with a flat tire, so regardless of my attire, there's no way I could have been useful. So many thanks to the Fire Department for assisting her in that.
Yes. Thank you. Just for the public, where does the money come from?
So the money was passed as part of the American Recovery Plan Act in March of 2021. It was part of a further response to the COVID pandemic. The intention of it was to really address, you know, CARES was reactionary, so of course the CARES Act was in, I think, March of 2020, and that was really a reaction to the pandemic. People, nobody budgeted for masks, hand sanitizer, PPE, all of the other stuff that came with that. ARPA was a forward-thinking program to show or to help take care of some of the issues that were exposed during COVID, right? People working from home, some of the infrastructure issues that communities were facing that became more strained during the pandemic. So ARPA was really a forward-looking program to help position counties, towns, cities, states, tribal entities all across the country with facing a future pandemic and being prepared for that. So it was passed into law in 2021. The federal government saw fit to allocate $101 million to Plymouth County. They allocated other funds to our other counties in Norfolk, Barnstable, Bristol, and Dukes County, and I'll give a credit to, you know, folks who know where Dukes County is, Martha's Vineyard, and we partnered with them. We partnered with Barnstable, Bristol, and Norfolk County. So that was another advantage that Plymouth County brought to you, was the compliance that we were able to do. We were able to share that cost with our other three counties. And the system that was set up by Plymouth County, with Plymouth County taking the lead, was envied by Dukes County. They wanted to join, but they were too late, unfortunately. But Clifton Larson Allen, who was one of our first level of review, ended up utilizing the model that we built for Plymouth County with their clients across the country. Treasurer O'Brien received calls from other county executives in Washington State, Colorado, asking him about the model that we built in Plymouth County. So we not only, I think, you know, really took the charge locally and led the way in the Commonwealth, but we certainly be, at least built a national model for other counties across the country to follow. And with the CARES Act, you know, we received national recognition from Congress for our management of the CARES Act at 0.89% administrative cost, and we also received a National Association of Counties Achievement Award for that as well. So not that we're doing this for awards, we certainly aren't. You know, we're doing it because candidly, we were elected to do the work. We were elected to serve the same constituents you were. You know, during the CARES Act, it was before I was elected, but Commissioner Wright was there, and as was Commissioner Hanley. The previous administration demanded that we return those funds to the state, and huge credit to my colleagues and my predecessor, Commissioner Palata. You know, the question they kept asking the Commonwealth, will you guarantee that the CARES Act money for Plymouth County will be spent in Plymouth County? And they could not guarantee that. And the three of them were the only commissioners of the only county in the Commonwealth that stood firm and said, we are making sure this $90 million stays in Plymouth County. And of course, you've read some of the stories that have come out since, you know, the Commonwealth misspent $2.5 billion in CARES Act money on the unemployment fund. They returned billions of, or millions of dollars, I don't want to say billions, they returned millions of dollars to the federal government that they were unable to spend in the right amount of time. As Commissioner Wright mentioned, we delivered 50% more dollars in the CARES Act. We haven't done that analysis through ARPA yet, but we're confident that Wareham and every other member community will have significantly benefited from Plymouth County administering that, because we're local. I live in Plymouth, she lives in Bridgewater, and we are elected by the same folks that you are. We answer to the same people you do, and we're accountable to them as well. So we really appreciated the opportunity to do that.
Great, thank you. Do any of you have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, I do have the real check in my possession.
Yes, and I think there's, there may be, I think there may be a supplemental allocation coming forward, which will be some good news in the future. So I think we're just waiting on the official announcement portion, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we did vote. I can't recall, I couldn't recall the 10 towns that were ten, and I'm glad Mrs. Sullivan has affirmed what I had suspected. Wareham was one of the 10 towns that I had submitted over, and we just voted two weeks ago now, a week and a half ago, to distribute those funds out of monies that were left over.
We will be back.
So we will be back.
Oh, excellent.
For sure, and we'll be back with the big check. It's, I think it's looking forward to its retirement, though. It's, I noticed somebody put tape on one of the corners, so it's.
As I recall, when you were here the last time, you joked about the, how the check had been.
The crease down the center, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
And, yeah.
That's from the wind everywhere we go, and the wind blows as we're trying to get in, and it just bends and.
Right, well, I don't think you were here, but Commissioner Wright knows the story. So for those viewing tonight, I, of course, Plymouth County is about, roughly about 100 square miles smaller than the state of Rhode Island. I just put that in perspective for folks. So we go from Wareham, which is, of course, the gateway to the Cape Cod here on the south coast, all the way up to Hull in Nantasket Beach and Boston Harbor Light. I like to use the lighthouses, right? Boston Harbor Light to, you know, to the lighthouse in Mata Poisette, whose name just went out my head as I started this little tale. But one particularly windy, rainy, blustery night in Hull with Congressman Stephen Lynch, although thankfully, I don't think he saw the performance I put on. The check blew out of my hand and was quickly making its way to enjoying a swim in Nantasket Beach, and I hurried after it in my suit in the rain, and I very violently stepped on it to make sure it didn't go any further, and when I went to pick it up, it had developed a crease down the middle. But some of the other little nuggets about the check, during the CARES Act, we would pose with the real checks. And one day, the Treasurer gets a call that somebody's trying to draw money from the CARES Act account, because some bad actors, you know, we posted pictures. As I say, we have our records dating all the way back to the Pilgrims, right? I mean, literally, that's when this, our, you know, positions began in the 1600s. So I like to say, we're just adding our little chapters to what will be a nice, long, and continual history. So the pictures are our contribution to that. And somebody tried to draw money from it. Actually, I think Tom had to go to court about six months ago on that case. So we realized we didn't want to keep dealing with that, so we created this check, and there were three Easter eggs on it. The account number is 12201620, if anybody knows what that date signifies, the day the Pilgrims landed in Plymouth. Then the other number's about 525, I think, 82, I'm sorry, 521202, 521,202 is the population of Plymouth County at the time the check was made. And then the check number is 1685. I'll give a special bonus if anybody can guess what year that signifies. That is the founding of Plymouth County. So of course, the Pilgrims settled in 1620. Colony was Plymouth Colony from 1620. 1685, they merged Mass Bay Colony and Plymouth Colony, and they create the county. So they split Plymouth Colony up. So Plymouth Colony used to extend to Newport, Rhode Island. It was all of Bristol, Barnstable Counties, as well as Tiverton and Newport, Rhode Island. That was Plymouth Colony. So they split it up, they create the counties, and if anybody's ever wondered why Hull and Hingham are in Plymouth County, back then, they asked them, do you want to be in Norfolk County, or do you want to be in Plymouth County? They asked Hull, Hingham, and Cohasset that. Hull and Hingham said, well, we'll join Plymouth, and Cohasset said, we'll join Norfolk. And not so unironically, we have a courthouse in Hingham, so Cohasset folks have to drive by, a very convenient courthouse to them in Hingham, to go to a courthouse in Denham.
That's right.
Hundreds of years later. So there's your colony and county history moment as well.
Thank you. Do you want to do a formal presentation?
Yeah, we'll just do a quick check, and I'll just bother someone to take a picture, and then we will be on our way.
Do we want to, just a second?
Yeah, maybe around the phone.
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 Yeah, do this, yeah, do the sorority pose. You, the tall ones go down.
You know, the prom line, the middle people, so, and everybody else does the same.
Yeah, do the sorority pose. You, the tall ones go down.
You know, the prom line, the middle people, so, and everybody else does the same.
Yeah, do the sorority pose.
It's been a long time since I've done a prom.
Yeah.
Okay, now a silly one.
Awesome.
Very good.
This will be covered.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So there was no shoe print on it?
Yeah, it was on the.
You had to clean it off, didn't you?
It's well-traveled, and it is dry-erasable, so we're not wasting money on the check every time.
Thank you, Mr. Valen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Enjoy your day in summer.
Thanks being here.
We'll be back soon.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you to Mr. Valenzola and Mrs. Wright. It is now 7:15, and I'm going to ask the clerk to read the information for the 7:15 hearing. And if you're here for the 7:15 hearing, could you step forward, please? Take a seat.
I move to open the hearing for a request for a transfer of all, annual all-alcoholic beverages, restaurant license from Vels Inc., doing business as Vels Restaurants, to CR-CM Treat Group LLC, doing business as Seastones Tavern, Robert Harriman Jr., manager, located at 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Massachusetts 02576.
Motion made a second to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, and we'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The hearing is open. Now I'm going to ask you to read the notice into the record.
Oh, do you have it at hand?
Of course I do.
Thank you.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General Laws that the Wareham Select Board has received an application for transfer of license of existing Section 12 annual all-alcoholic restaurants license from Vels Inc., doing business as Vels Restaurant, to CR-CM Treat Group Incorporated, doing business as Seastones Tavern, Robert Harriman Jr., manager. The premises is located at 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, 02576. And do I read the description?
Yes, please.
And described as follows. 3,912 square feet, single-story building with lounge, two dining rooms and a kitchen, basement for storage, and five entrances and exits, and/or exits. It is ordered that a public hearing be held on said application within the Select Board meeting at approximately 7:15 p.m. on Tuesday, June 17, 2025.
Thank you. So gentlemen, if you would identify yourself for the record and let us know what you're here to do, although we just heard it.
Good evening, Chairman Board. My name is Craig Medeas. I am the attorney for Rob Harriman and the CR-CM Treat Group LLC, doing business as Seastones Tavern. I do have Rob Harriman with me here tonight.
Hi, my name's Robert Harriman Jr. I live in Henover, Mass.
Just to give you a brief description, like I said, I have Rob here with me tonight, who's the owner, officer, and proposed manager of the applicant. Rob does have an extensive amount of experience in the bar and restaurant industry. He has worked as a manager at Mama Mia's, as well as the executive chef at the Waterfront Grill in Plymouth. For the last year, three years, he has been the owner and operator of Cornerstones located in Carver. The proposed concept is going to be very similar to Cornerstones in Carver. It will not be overly different from Vels. I know that's something that's, the town of Wareham is worried about, that we're going to totally change it. of operational and capital improvements to the property. In the near term, we hope to upgrade the septic system, make a whole plethora of inside upgrades, including the installation of every sprinkler system which is needed at the property. I had actually represented the seller of Cornerstones in Carver when Rob had purchased it, I was on the other side of the table. And he has made a significant amount of improvements there. The operations are great. The place is light, they do a great amount of business. It's really been a boon for the town of Carver. And he's looking to do the same for the town of Wareham and be welcomed by the town of Wareham. If the board does have any questions or concerns regarding any items in the application, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Not at this time.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, what's your first name again?
It's Craig.
Craig, okay. Sorry. So when I was reviewing the packet of information and I know that Kathleen Moore from our office called about a couple of things, there, I'm going to ask you to be more specific about who actually this is because I see CR-CM Treat Group LLC, I see CR-CM Treat Group Inc., I see, I see, I think it's three separate corporate names, I bent one of the pages over.
Yeah, I can actually, I can start to clarify that if you don't have to go through them all.
Yes.
Just to give you a brief walkthrough.
Yeah, please.
So currently at Vels, the real estate is owned by Carpst LLC. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. And then the business as well as the liquor license is owned by Vels Inc. Very similarly, in this proposed application, there are two entities. There's Treat Real Estate Group LLC, which is proposed to own the real estate at the site. And then the CR-CM Treat Group LLC will own the liquor license and the business inside. It's very typical to have different entities own the real estate versus the business just for liability and operational purposes. It also makes sense for tax purposes. So there are four entities involved. The Bump family is the primary owner, officers of Carpst and Vels Inc. Rob individually is the sole officer and owner of Treat Real Estate Group LLC as well as the CR-CM Treat Group LLC.
Okay. And the license would be held under CR-CM Treat Group LLC?
Correct.
DBA Stone, yeah, okay. All right. I'm going to have the office call you tomorrow with a couple of more, I'm going to ask you to actually change some of your application votes because they don't make sense to me.
Okay.
Okay. But Kathleen will reach out to you tomorrow and, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday, Thursday's a holiday, so again, it's partly my pickiness over the business entity summary and the corporate vote. And other than that, we do have on file.
You mean the seller corporate vote?
No.
Okay.
No.
Corporate vote for the, it's an ABCC prescribed form for the actual vote.
Right. But again, she'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Okay, if that's okay. And I do have a couple of questions. You have a closing, a closing. And you mentioned that there would be improvements to the building. Can you go over them again, please?
So, I mean, the larger dollar items would be the septic system, which a septic design has already been performed by J.C. Engineering. And then on the inside, a lot of the improvements would be cosmetic, but the plan is at one point in time down the future, hopefully a few months down the road, we're going to do the septic system as well as a sprinkler system at the site. Currently, the occupancy of the building is limited to 99 people because it does not have a sprinkler system. So we have already priced out, we've had a sprinkler company at the site, they were actually in the process of drawing plans already for the installation of the sprinkler system. So our intent is to keep the occupancy at 99 and a few months down the road, once we're able to schedule everything, the septic system, the interior improvements and the sprinkler system all at once, just so we don't have to shut down at separate periods to do all of that work. So that would be the, the main improvements would be the septic system, sprinkler system, and then a lot of cosmetic equipment upgrades, paint and things of that nature.
Okay.
We have a new clerk.
Okay.
Learning the job.
And because I had so many questions, I had alerted her earlier this afternoon to make sure that, that your paperwork was in order so that we're not holding you up.
Yep.
Okay.
So I move to close the hearing for the transfer of an all-alcohol alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Vels Inc., doing business as Vels Restaurant, to CR-CM Treat Group LLC, doing business as Seastones Tavern, Robert Harriman Jr., manager, located at 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Massachusetts, 02576.
Motion made in second to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. The hearing is now closed. I will accept a motion, Madam Clerk.
I would move to approve the request for transfer of all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Vels Inc., doing business as Vels Restaurant, to CR-CM Treat Group LLC, doing business as Seastones Tavern, Robert Harriman Jr., manager, located at 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Massachusetts, 02576, with an occupancy not to exceed 99 people and pending all paperwork being done correctly.
Second.
Motion made in seconded with those two caveats. Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick. Ms. Corbett. Mr. Gomes. And myself. Aye. So next, let's deal with their common vic app, please.
I move to open the hearing for an.
No, it's not a hearing.
Oh, it's just an applicant?
Just an application.
Oh, okay.
I move to approve.
I move to approve the application for an annual common vic general license under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Massachusetts General Laws, CR-CM Treat Group LLC, doing business as Seastones Tavern, Robert Harriman Jr., manager, located at 2352 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Massachusetts, 02576, with an occupancy not to exceed 99 people and pending all paperwork being finished correctly.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. So I make Robin Williams look pretty good.
Thanks very much.
The paperwork will be submitted to the ABCC and you'll get a call probably tomorrow or maybe Monday again because we are not open on Fridays and there is a holiday. Thank you very much and thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham.
Yeah, thank you.
You too.
Do you have Christine Souza online?
Christine Santos.
Yes, Christine Santos, yes.
Yes.
Could you let her into the meeting, please? She is? Can you identify yourself for the record, Christine, please?
I'm Christine Santos. I'm the conservation agent for the town.
And you have been recommended to be the Town of Wareham's committee member to BEAC, which is Buzzards Bay Action Committee. Could you speak a little bit about the request to appoint you to that and you would be succeeding Josh Farady? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
So I have been going to a couple of the meetings with Josh and they've been pretty interesting. They have been discussing sort of future endeavors that the BBAC could be taking. And we're kind of just brainstorming ideas of what that direction could be in the future right now. So I'm hoping to be able to help out a little bit more with that.
Excellent. Any questions of Christine? I'll accept a motion to appoint.
I move to appoint Christine Santos as our representative to the Buzzards Bay Action Committee.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to appoint Ms. Santos to BEAC. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick. Ms. Corbett. And Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. So next.
Will you open that door, please?
Yeah.
Are they gone?
I have to keep it open.
Yeah.
I know. I went out and talked to them.
Go ahead. Discussion impossible, just make a motion to approve. Yep. To amend, yeah.
I move to amend the term expiration for Scott Sobey as a member-at-large to the Seward Commission from May 6, 2026 to May 1, 2026.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to change the expiration date for Mr. Sobey. If we didn't change the date, there wouldn't be a vacancy on the ballot in 2026 and May of '26. So we backed it up to fix that and the Seward Commissioners have already taken that action. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so. And motion?
I move to appoint Josh Farady as a representative of the Select Board to the Serped Commission term to expire May 31, 2026.
Motion made in seconded to approve Mr. Farady as a representative from the Select Board to the Serped Commission. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so. Next.
I move to reappoint Susan Dory as an associate.
You skipped D.
Oh, geez. I move to appoint Julie Moran to the Bylaw Review Committee with a term to expire at the conclusion of the October 26 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, it is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move to appoint, did we just do this? I'm sorry, you're going so fast.
No. That's the one you.
We're doing Susan now.
Yes, yes.
Discussion impossible vote to reappoint. No. I move to appoint Susan Dory as an associate member to the Board of Health with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Reappoint.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Reappoint.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, it is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Just for the record, all associate members are only one-year appointments. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. So.
I move to reappoint Patrick Trappiano as a member to the Board of Health with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Motion made in seconded, it is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye.
I move to confirm the Wareham Historical Commission appointment for Robert Blair as the Wareham Historical Commission representative to the Community Preservation Committee with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, it is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. So just for the record, again, unless we have all of the paperwork, these names are not appearing on our agenda. It's just too much for the office to chase people for missing paperwork after, after we tried it the other way and it doesn't work, so. HC, Ms. Corbett, common vic for.
I move to approve the application for an annual common vic general license under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws, Tavern Hospitality LLC, doing business as The Poor Farm Tavern, 196 Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, Jennifer McQ, manager.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, it is read into the record. We gave them a alcohol license two weeks ago and they had overlooked having to apply for the common vic, so we're just fixing that up. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Gomes.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so. Okay.
I move to approve the application for secondhand junk dealer's license under the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 54 of the Massachusetts General Laws for the year 2025 for Home Depot USA Incorporated, doing business as Home Depot, numbered 2613 to 2994 Cranberry Highway East, Wareham, 02578, pending all departmental approvals.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that new for them or is that?
No, it's annual because they sell.
You just must miss it?
Yeah, no, we do it every year.
In the back where they rent stuff?
Yeah.
You can buy that stuff, too.
You can buy that stuff, too.
That's all it is.
Yes.
Are they extending it?
They have to do it every year.
Oh, they're re.
Their annual renewals, yeah.
All right.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
And myself.
I'll say yes.
Don't make me laugh.
Okay.
Mr. Boschman, why don't you step forward, please? Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Steven Boschman from 19 Depot Street. We're here looking to present a project for 20 Depot Street. It's on the corner of Tyler Ave across from the East Wareham School. We're looking to add three units over there for a total of six and two would be affordable. They would be on the furthest side from Depot. Did you folks receive the packet from Lynn?
We did, only I think on Thursday, so some of us haven't had an opportunity to look at the whole thing.
So you guys, they're.
Sure.
Live or print?
Right now. No, no. That's.
Mr., do you want a bigger one?
Was there something larger? Can I use your own gas? Yeah, I'm looking on my phone, but yes.
Those will be for and after.
We can't hear you unless you speak into the mic. Thank you. Go ahead.
That front page is the existing conditions. The second page is what we're presenting, which would be four, five, and six units. The duplex that we're intending to put up is going to mimic the existing one that's on the site. Which would contain two, three bedrooms. And the building alongside the garage would be a two-bedroom single unit.
Do that again, Mr. Boschman.
So the, on the backside, in the dark, those would be the C-units four, five, and six. So five and six is going to mimic the existing duplex that faces Depot. Six would be a single unit, two-bedroom. 930 square feet on the two-bedroom.
Beautiful piece of property, very well kept.
Thank you.
What boards have you been before?
We've been in front of the Affordable Trust, and we got a letter of support from those folks. And our next step is here in front of you guys, asking you for a letter of support, and if we could ask to get the application signed, so we can forward the paperwork, Lynn can forward the paperwork to the state to get the ball rolling, that would be great.
Do you ever go before the planning board?
Yes, couldn't ask.
We do not. No. No. Our next move, well, the last product that we did, we did Chapel Lane as well, beyond that. We went from the trust to the selectmen. Paperwork all got forwarded to the state, and we went in front of the ZBA.
Is there any wetlands on this property?
There is not.
And you don't have to go in front of the ConCom, Conservation?
There's no wetlands, no ma'am.
Just because there's no wetlands, okay.
Correct.
It isn't a floodplain, no?
No.
No, it's not in the flood zone. Yeah.
It's those blue ones, right at the, the blue ones across from the school.
Right on the corner of Tyler Ave.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I used to skateboard over across the street, the park, and when the school was in there.
Oh, yeah. I went to school there when I was a kid, to be honest with you. Yeah.
So you sent us a draft letter, which I may or may not have in front of me. What were some of the concerns that the Affordable Housing Trust might have had, if they had any?
I don't think there was any. I don't believe they had any issues at all.
And who...
We're looking for an updated... We got a letter in 2023, and with this project is two years older, Lynn had asked them for a 2025 current letter.
Right.
Yep.
Because you had to go before them for the units that are there already. Is that right?
No.
But this board...
One, two, and three units are non. Those are market values.
Okay. I thought they were...
There's no affordability to this property at all. Just, the only affordable property that we own now is the Chapel Lane project.
So I have a question. You have, how many units that you're building?
On...
On this...
On this side here, there's three existing.
Yep.
And we're looking to add three more.
And how many of them are going to be affordable?
Two out of the six would be affordable.
Is that a standard?
So it's one and four. So if there was a unit, it'd be a minimum of two from the state.
So the reason for that, Madam Chairperson, is the whole project is considered towards our SHI list.
Correct, on account of the rentals, Derek.
We're not going backwards on it. It's adding to it.
So those would be added?
All the units would be.
Be added to the SHI.
Okay. Am I, do I have a memory of, you had some issues either before the planning board or the zoning board, because there were two separate properties or something at once? No?
This is all one piece.
Okay. I like the color.
I still have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
New to this process, so what is SHI?
Housing inventory.
What's the S?
She asked, Derek.
Subsidized.
So, thank you.
Okay. And is the fact that these fall into that category means you're exempt from planning board and ZBA?
No. No, we're going in front of the ZBA.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Oh, I didn't hear that part.
I thought you asked if we were going in front of the planning board.
I did. I asked. I did.
That wasn't our protocol last time. We went from Housing Trust, Select Board, paperwork to the state, and then we went in front of the ZBA.
Okay, thank you. That was what I was confused on. All right, thanks.
Steve, we're essentially doing this because of the support of the town. It's considered a little bit of a friendly 40B. Is that what we're going for?
Friendly, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So can you explain to the uninitiated, what is a friendly 40B?
You know, it's something if we think that it's appropriate for the area, we work with them on it, and that's where writing the letter of support. And that usually means that's something that you're in support of. Otherwise, you know, these processes take longer, and usually when you get something that you don't really want from the community. So it seems like this is a, this is a good one. Again, all the units are counting towards our subsidized housing inventory, so when everybody says you're 10%, that's what we're talking about. We're trying to reach 10% of our housing being affordable, and this helps us towards the goal.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions about this link in the letter that I will talk to you about tomorrow.
Okay.
Assuming that this board authorizes it to sign.
Certainly.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions about the, some of what's in the letter that you, the draft letter that you sent us, so I would go over those with you tomorrow, if that's okay.
So if I could ask you to...
I don't remember...
With Lynn on that?
Oh, sure, yeah.
She's away until Tuesday, the following week.
All right, then we'll reach out to her and get the letter to her.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So if there are no other questions, then I'll ask for a motion to approve, to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for, et cetera.
I move to authorize the chair to write a letter of support for the Affordable Housing Project at 20 Depot Street.
Motion made in second to authorize the chair, et cetera. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still, Mr. Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, Mr. Gomes, and myself. It is so. I will reach out to her on Tuesday, if that's okay.
And a signature on the application as well? She asked for that, too? Two things?
Yeah, there's, there were, yes.
There was two things.
Yes.
That's all. We're on the same page.
Yes, we are, sorry.
All right, no, beautiful.
Thanks, Mr. Boschman.
All right, guys, thank you very, very much, Derek. Thank you for your support. Appreciate everything from everyone. Have a great day.
You, too.
Mr. Boschman, just one question, if you have...
One more time.
Yeah, just one question. I'm just, I'm putting you a little bit on the spot here, but with what we're doing here in Chapel Lane, is that kind of, is that finishing what you're seeing as a scope of the housing sort of in that area? Because we're starting to compact some things in sort of that neighborhood.
In that area? I think we're built out.
Okay, yeah.
I do believe that. Unless something else popped up, and there's plenty of room.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just...
You know, and if you, of course, if you guys support the project, we'd, you know, we'd present it.
All right.
Absolutely. All right? All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too. Motion to...
I move to approve the application for the Pan-Mass Challenge Water Stop and Road Use for Bike-A-Thon to raise money for Dana Farber Cancer Institute on August 2nd, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still, Mr. Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, Mr. Gomes, and myself. It is so, yes.
I move to approve the application for the onset Cape Verdean Festival Association Road Use to Celebrate Cape Verdean Culture on August 9th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with a rain date of August 10th, 2025, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Motion made in second to approve. This is part of a package of a whole bunch of things that they have to apply for, for this festival. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
They're not here to speak on this, but what, what do you advise them to do since Lopes Field is no longer for parking, and Hammond School has no parking?
There are several pieces of property that they could ask the owners of. I believe Mr. Andrade owns the one next to the, I call it the cranberry-colored building on the corner of, it's Catty Corner.
All right.
Okay. There's certainly Heinz Field, and in the past, they've used shuttle services.
Yes, yeah.
And so...
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And they are aware of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Any other questions on them? Other than that, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Gomes? And myself, aye to so, yep. I put continued discussion regarding updated liaison assignments, and I gave you each one. I think we're all set on these, but I'm going to ask you to...
I think we ironed them all out.
I think we have ironed them all out, unless you have a question.
I saw the open one for water recesses.
Oh, there was, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Not that I was joining, I just, I noticed that, so do we have to fill that in?
Sure, do you want to do that? Did you just volunteer?
No.
Was Marcus on school committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Gomes, I'm sorry?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, because I just see a name crossed out, and then no one's put there, but I'll guess that.
School committee is...
It's me and Jared, and Mr. Chadwick.
Yeah.
Doesn't have a name, so I just didn't know.
And you should have, well, this list needs to be updated as well, in terms of, it's a list of when they meet and where they meet, that kind of stuff. So, okay, we don't need to do anything on that, then. Any other business? I don't have any 48-hour business, Mr. Administrator. I know that this was the last day of school for your children, so I'm sure that you're ready to throw some more water balloons. Is that what you did to your daughter? You threw water balloons at her?
Yeah, last year, we got her a squirt gun, so she said, "Please don't hit me when I get off the bus with squirt guns," so we agreed, and hit her with water balloons instead, so. She was quite happy with us, so. It's the last year, things start changing. They do clap outs for the next one, so fun old tradition. Thank you for asking. The, so, we had a couple of big events over the weekend, which I think you spoke about, but one of the things we also did Monday was we reopened Bayview Park. You know, obviously, you see the white barriers up there. Those are temporary until about mid-July, when we'll get the rest of the fencing in. Really, you know, it was nice to see people immediately using the park, walking through it. You could almost see people plotting their paths. Saw my first jogger through there. We did have, over the weekend before the opening, one of the versions of why we can't have nice things, and unfortunately, it was actually on Friday when we were putting the tack down over the pavement. Somebody, I guess they really had to go to the bathroom badly. It was a young lady hopped the white, the white barriers there after walking across the street with fresh tar on her feet or shoes, and then immediately walked up the sidewalk to the porta johns, you know, basically breaking through the fence and such. So if you see the roughly 200 feet of footprints, that's where that came from. That was not any of the paving crew or anything like that. Then unfortunately, it was one of our residents that did that. Or a visitor. So mostly someone from the area, so. Bit of a shame. We're going to have to steam clean those off, which the cement's been sealed, which means we're going to have to reseal all those 200 feet, so. You know, what somebody probably thought was fun, or just, you know, might have been a little bit of emergency, we've all been there, is something that's going to cost the town a lot of money. So, folks, just when we block something off, we do it for a reason. You'll also see along the paths, another set of footprints, a little bit further on, somebody that just couldn't wait to get into the park, so. You know, I guess I appreciate the enthusiasm. So that's up on the good news with Bayview Park. Beyond that is what the Plymouth County Commissioners were speaking about earlier is, we were awarded a little over $209,000 in supplemental ARPA funds. That was, we had to apply for that back in December, and essentially have already expended the funds when we were applying for it, and we did not know if there'd be any of the supplemental funds available. So those are, that's helped offset some of the extra costs of the Bayview Park projects, or we're very glad to get it, glad we were able to apply for it and get it in there. So I just need everybody to know that's not funds that we can, we can actually spend on some other project we had to have already allocated, but it's helping offset what we had already funded, so. Some really good news, and I thought that was a great presentation by them tonight. Another item, we closed on 80 Marion Road. That is the house that, if you're looking at Town Hall to the right of us. If you remember, Town Meeting allocated $600,000 for the purchase, and we utilized, the purchase price is actually $550,000. Cost a little bit more when you go through the HUD and some of the, some of the legal costs, used Brown Legal on it. So very happy that we went through and all that's together, so now we own that entire path, that entire land area over to Glendale Ave. So I think it was a key piece missing for the town. And we secured the property and also are shutting off the utilities and such, just to make sure we don't have any, any issues with it. So thank you for all your support in getting that done. That was really, that was a really good project for the community, and having the foresight for something I think is going to, maybe we can do something very positive in the future, so. And that is all. Get back to some of the water balloon fights, so.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm sure that none of us would object if you left the meeting at this time.
Oh, okay.
Well, if you want to, if you want to stay, but I understand kids and their last day of school, and you probably have some awesome ideas, too.
I figured you were going to let me leave and then do a motion to adjourn, so. You gave me some big...
It's up to you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Have a nice... Liaison and initiative reports, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Still.
All right, we're just talking about one tonight, right?
Please.
So before I hopped on Select Board, I was a two-year member on Conservation Committee. They're tasked with protecting inland wetlands and our natural coastline. From my knowledge, actually, Wareham's got about 55 miles of coastline? 54? 54. She knew that number. And it's a large task, and we've had a very good committee. Initially, when I hopped on, I was an associate, and I learned a lot. So any of the viewers reading, you know, watching this meeting tonight, I suggest sitting on for at least three meetings, if you're interested about sending an application in. They're certainly tasked with something that's prevalent in Wareham, is nature, land, and wetland areas. So it's a crucial committee in town, and it deserves some good members on there, so if you're interested in the environment, plants, animals, they welcome you with open arms. I certainly learned a lot, and if anybody else watching is interested in getting involved, it's a great committee to start with.
How many times a month?
How many times a month? I believe it's just two, right? No? Second week of every month, I'm pretty sure. It's Wednesday nights. Yeah, second week, because then it's the first, gosh, first and third. That would make more sense. I'm trying to remember here. They certainly do have some long talks there. People are very passionate regarding anything, the environment, so if you're a tree hugger, that's the committee for you. If you love your animals, that's the committee for you. Meetings aren't horribly long, but they serve as lengthy discussions on something that benefits the community overall, so. So there's currently six members. We had seven, two associates positioned open, maybe three? Is there one there? It might be three. We did just lose a voting member, and then we got another one back on, so we have another voting seat open currently on ConCom, so. If anyone's interested, please do reach out to Chairwoman Slavin.
Just for the record, we suggest you go to three meetings in person, but because of the modern technology, you actually could have watched a lot of meetings and not ever actually gone to a meeting. And I've had this discussion with a couple of chairs of other committees, well, the person wasn't there, but he or she watched several meetings, in fact, like a year's worth of meetings. So I think, you know, from my perspective, that's watching the meeting, and you may not be able to interact at the meeting, but you're certainly watching it. Thank you, Mr. Still. No? Okay.
Yeah, I have a couple things. One of the committees that I'm a liaison for is the Recycling Committee, and their mission statement, they coordinate recycling and waste diversion efforts for the town. They act as liaison with the volunteers at the recycling center. They divert common household items away from the landfill by encouraging creative reuse. They develop educational programs for all age levels to increase awareness. They design special events to increase resident participation for reduce, reuse, and recycle, and they seek grants to support the recycling program. There are currently five members. They meet the third Wednesday of every month at 6:00 p.m., and certainly, they could use people interested in becoming a member of the committee, but they could also use volunteers at the center itself. They just recently, two of their longtime volunteers recently retired, so they are looking for more hands. So is it just liaison reports right now, or can we do comments?
You can do comments, too, or announce, yes, go ahead.
Okay.
I didn't, I'll go back to you if you have comments, too. But let her finish up.
Comments pertaining to decisions on the board?
No, 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 like...
Anything coming up.
Anything coming up or anything, but we'll let her go.
Yes, I, because there is one or two.
Okay. I sat in on a presentation by Mass DOT on the Fairhaven, not Fairhaven, my lord, Wareham Marion Bridge, and the work that they're doing there. Right now, as everybody has noticed, there's one lane closed on one side, and they're doing boring work there in prep for the eventual construction of the bridge. And they're on one side now, they'll be on the other side after that, and they will do a series of public outreach meetings in August of 2025. So I just, I sat in on it. We got an invitation as a select board, and I'm always eager to learn things. Then I'd also like to talk about a vote we took last week on Water Whiz, and I want to, I've had a lot of questions about my vote, and I want to explain that I voted against approving the licenses for Water Whiz, because the building inspector, the town planner, the police chief, the fire chief, and the EMS all asked us to vote against those applications.
Do you have any? Mr. Gomes?
I was a part of the Wareham Cultural Council. I'm now a liaison for the Wareham Cultural Council. It is now four members. We like to sit at five. I think I've spoken two times before in our meetings and saying, you know, we need more members for that, especially other committees in town. We need to fill those spots up. They call themselves the Fund Committee, and I agree with that very much. I mean, we grant money to entities like Buzzers Bay Coalition, the Council on Aging, the Wareham Free Library, and others that do apply for these grants. And one thing people don't know is that that committee is a part of town. And they don't know that you can apply for these grants, but you have to check all your eyes and, well, yeah, check all, you know what I'm saying. But you have to make sure that it's good for the committee, the community, science, education, and I just feel like every time that we put out surveys to let people know that this is a part of something that's going on in town, we don't really get that much feedback. So I figure the more that we speak about this and let people know that this is something that's in town, it's something that we grant, we get grants from the state to give to the people in this town. I think it's a great thing to get behind. We meet eight times out of the year, one being a reception for people that we give this grant money to.